All right, everyone. I call the Commissioners Meeting of June 15th, 2022 to order. Thank you again, our veteran Patrick, for joining us and leading us in the pledge. And Commissioner Smith is going to lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, gather here this evening in order to make decisions which affect those that have selected or elected us to public office, to serve them. Father, as always, we will always will continue to ask for your discerning wisdom in rendering those decisions. Father, we ask for your divine protection of our law enforcement personnel, our EMS personnel, our firefighters, as they continue to serve their mankind, their community, to protect against, to protect life and property. And Father, as always, we ask for your safe protection and blessings of our military and law enforcement, or excuse me, our military, as they serve across the world to protect democracy, which allows us to hold free and open meetings such as this one tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. I can have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 1st, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll open up to public comment. Hearing none. If the folks watching will indulge us for a minute, we are gonna slip, move to the, towards the end of the agenda to accommodate a scheduling. And we're gonna do a proclamation now. This proclamation is for our newly crowned Miss Pennsylvania Senior, who is a resident of York County. So if we could just ask Delma to come up and, oh, sorry, pull up the proclamation here. Ron, can you scroll if I don't know?
I'll try.
Okay. So, this proclamation is for Delma Rivera-Lito. She is the first woman from York County to win the Miss Pennsylvania Senior America, and she won that title just recently, this year. Whereas longtime York County resident Delma Rivera-Lito competed and won the Miss Senior Pennsylvania America Pageant in June. And whereas during the competition, which celebrates the excellence of senior women, Delma performed Obama, a dance native to her birthplace, which is Puerto Rico. In addition to the dance portion of the competition, Delma was required to undergo a private interview, deliver a philosophy of life speech, and show grace and poise in the evening gown portion. And whereas, Delma graduated from Central Grove High School and later Gettysburg College with degrees in both Spanish and sociology. And whereas prior to her interest in pageants, Delma was a diversity specialist for Central Grove School District. And whereas Delma has strived to help others in the community serving on the boards of Latinas Unidos of York and Governor Tom Wolf's Commission on Latino Affairs. And whereas in September, Delma will compete in the National Miss Senior America in Hershey. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of York County, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim Delma Rivera-Lito, a deserving ambassador of York County, exemplifying principles of perseverance, aptitude, and independence. Delma, you have our full support in your efforts to win the Miss Senior America Pageant. Given this day in York and the commonwealth of Pennsylvania on the 15th day of June in the year of our Lord 2022, and signed by the Board of Commissioners.
If we can move on to the consent agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda items below for the Office of Children, Youth and Families and the York County Planning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Move on to new business?
I make a motion to approve the following letters of agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Adult Probation Department and the following agencies listed below to provide court reporting networks, driving under the influence education classes, and intervention treatment to driving under the influence clients for the period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30, 2023, and there's listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the Human Services Department and the Community Progress Council, York, Pennsylvania, to provide rental and utility assistance for eligible York County residents for a total cost of $16,771,578 for the period of June 1st, 2022, to May 31st, 2023, and it's funded by the Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the Information Technology Services Department and LIT Communities Birmingham, Alabama, for last mile broadband services to the initial service areas of New Freedom, Railroad Glenrock, and Seven Valleys boroughs upon successful contract negotiations at no cost to the county.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I know Silas is joining us. Did you want to share any comments?
Okay. Great. Thank you, Commissioners. I do have a few slides just to give you a summary of the content behind both the motions this evening. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Yoko Fiber Broadband Task Force that you created over a year ago to help implement the countywide broadband strategy that we had developed at the end of 2020 using CARES Act funding. And since then, the task force has been meeting periodically to talk about the best ways to implement that strategy. And now is before you making recommendations on these motions to use ARPA funding on one of the projects and approval on the other one. So just to give you a little context, this dates back to early 2021 when the Yoko Strong Recovery Task Force made broadband a priority in its recommendations to the county commissioners and part of the York County Economic Action Plan, which became part of our comprehensive plan that was approved at the end of December 2020. You created the task force in January 2021, so going on a year and a half ago. And you had previously approved, in concept, up to $25 million in federal ARPA funding to support implementation of the strategy to include three focus areas, a last mile project in four communities along the Heritage Rail Trail, middle mile design and construction, and I'll have some more details on that in a moment, and then urban wireless networks in the York and Hanover metros. Just to give you a reminder, this is the members of our broadband task force. It includes representatives from the county itself, Joe Sisano, Mark Dur, and then representatives of education, both K-12 and higher ed, the healthcare community, the utilities community, economic development community, engineering. So a lot of great perspectives as part of our task force. Within that, the, for the motions that you'll see today for the recommendations for LIT Communities, we had a great review team that volunteered their time to review all the proposals we received. And that was John Kleindens, Phil Witkowski, who's with Wellspan, Mark Dur, Joe Sisano, myself, and David Gonzalez on the YCEA team. So the first motion is related to last mile pilot projects in the four communities along the Heritage Rail Trail. If you recall, using CARES Act funding, the county installed 16 miles of fiber underneath the rail trail in early 2021. That project was completed. And now this is the next step in going off of that backbone of fiber underneath the rail trail and working with a private partner to make fiber connections to homes and businesses in the four boroughs along the rail trail. The goal of this partnership is that the private partner brings its own capital to the table. This is at no cost to the county. And then the private provider will compensate the county for access to that fiber that's, that the county owns. This is very similar to models that are already deployed in Maryland, in some counties, and some other parts of the country, where public-private partnerships between the county and a private provider are doing pretty much the same thing. And if successful, and the reason we're calling this a pilot project, if this is a successful partnership, it's something that we would try to model throughout the middle mile as it's built out, working with private partners and creating revenue sharing models with the county. When we issued, the county issued its RFI earlier this year, I guess it was actually late last year, we received five internet service providers interested in entering to a partnership with the county. We conducted interviews with two finalists in April of 2022, and based on that, had selected LIT Communities as the finalist firm to work with on the last mile pilot projects. We liked several things about their proposal. They proposed working with Henkels and McCoy and Catapult Engineering, both partners that we successfully worked with on our 16-mile fiber project back in 2021. They made a proposal, unlike some of the other proposals, that said they would bring all the private capital to the table and would not be looking to the county for funding on this project. And they already have that capital secured through at least two very large investors. They proposed an 18-month timeline, so this is not something that will just go on and on. We'd like to connect homes and businesses as soon as possible. It's a replicable model, as I said, is something we can do over and over again throughout the county with internet providers. And the 16 miles that are already underneath the rail trail, we can work with LIT to assist with the costs of maintaining and operating that dark fiber and build that into the business plan and the agreement with the county. So the motion is to accept the recommendation from the task force that the county enter into negotiations with LIT Communities to work out the terms of this partnership and to work with Mark, with Michelle, and others to hammer out that final agreement. The second motion is related to building out the middle mile network. And if you recall, this overall middle mile network is countywide in nature, seven rings of dark fiber constituting about 333 miles across the whole county. We had, in our countywide plan, identified rings four, five, and six, the three rings that cover most of southern York County as our priorities for first phase, in large part because that's the portion of the county that's most underserved. There's portions of rings four and rings five, and even some portions of ring six, where up to 70% of households do not currently have broadband access because there's just no fiber infrastructure in those areas. So the proposal that we put out was to say, can you come in and help us design and build this? We received six design-build bids based on that RFI, responses based on that RFI. We interviewed three finalists in April of 2022, and once again selected LIT Communities as the finalist. There were a number of reasons why. One of the major reasons was their budget was much lower than some of the other proposals, in part because they are proposing a little bit of different structure in terms of going through the engineering and design process and managing this project for us, but then doing a public bid for construction at a later time so we can lock in the most competitive bid on construction. We also liked that they are a partner on the last mile construction, and we think there's some great synergy there, and that if we do have a successful partnership with them, although we'll continue to do public RFIs and RFPs for future phases of last mile, they would be well positioned, obviously, to bid on that work and be an ongoing partner. And again, there's, the motion that you're approving is simply the recommendation of the task force, and then we would enter into a process of negotiating a contract for LIT's work and the construction itself after, following the public bid, not to exceed $20 million, which is the portion of the ARPA funds that the Commissioners had previously committed. This is a very similar model to what we did for the 16 miles under the Heritage Rail Trail. If you recall, we worked with LIT and Catapult Engineering to design that project, to help us prepare bid packages, and then publicly bid work that Henkels and McCoy eventually secured. And that was a very successful model, and we'd like to duplicate it on this first three rings of fiber. So again, just to summarize, we are recommending as a task force these two motions and continuing this partnership with LIT Communities. This was all summarized for the Commissioners in a recommendation memo, and I believe is captured well in the two motions that are in front of you. So happy to take any questions that you have.
Just on the, we're on motion three now, which, for people watching, the New Freedom area, the Railroad Glenrock and Seven Valleys, for, you mentioned 18 months. Is that the timeline for them possibly having access or not?
Yes, that would be the rough timeline. So, you know, when we negotiate our contract and get them under contract through that, for that partnership, that would be the, that would be the time when they start, you know, going out, getting permits, doing the engineering of that network, and then starting to build it. And they're estimating that's an 18-month window.
And I know more than I know before, but when we get there, the question is up to, up to $20 million, which was the funding from ARPA. But you're going out and actually going to be bidding this, so if you commit anywhere underneath?
Yeah, right now, I mean, in the proposal that LIT provided, they are estimating a total project cost of less than half of that. But I think we all know the realities of supply chain and procurement right now. So we have confidence that, you know, even if it comes in at twice what we're thinking, we're still within the budget that the Commissioners have approved. And it's, this is also a scalable project. So if we get into it and we get back construction bids that are $26 million, and that means we can only do, you know, up to a certain amount of mileage in that first phase, then we can scale it back to keep it within budget. So you're not committing to anything that would, you know, take you over budget on this.
Okay.
I would just add, I mean, I think it's great for the county to have an opportunity to share in a revenue generating model. That's something certainly that is advantageous for our taxpayers and for fiscal responsibility. I think when you look at the strategic plan that the Board of Commissioners embarked on last year, two of the strategic anchors are, one are fiscal responsibility, the other is around infrastructure. Certainly, these two motions speak to both of those strategic anchors, and I think this project is an incredible demonstration of how the public sector and the private sector can work together to build a better community. So, thanks.
Right. And thank you for mentioning the, the revenue sharing model, because that'll be one of the things that is totally spelled out and defined in that partnership. There's a model for a fee per demand point, so that's every home and business. There's a fee structure to that. And based on that, we can do projections on, you know, county revenue. But even in the rough numbers that we have already, we know that this is not a cost to the county if, you know, it's just a question of what the scale of the revenue is.
Any further questions for Silas? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the Information Technology Service Department and LIT Communities Birmingham, Alabama, for design and engineering of the middle mile broadband services and preparation of construction bid specifications for rings four, five, and six upon successful contract negotiations at a cost not to exceed $20 million.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Please extend our thanks to the broadband task force. We know that they're giving of their time, and we appreciate all their efforts to bring us to this point. It's very exciting.
Great. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information Technology Services Department and CDW-G Chicago, Illinois, for various Microsoft licensing for a total cost of $122,256.69.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the District Attorney's Office and Macarith Consulting, York, Pennsylvania, to facilitate conversations around the need for sustainable policy and procedural changes as it relates to PFAs and domestic violence for a total cost of $5,000 per month, not to exceed 12 months.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the District Attorney's Office and Elections Systems Installers, York, Pennsylvania, for security updates for a total cost of $20,961.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the District Attorney's Office and Lehigh County Regional Intelligence and Investigation Center, Allentown, Pennsylvania, for annual support and maintenance of software through the Blue Guardian application for a total cost of $15,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve change order number one between the County of York on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department and Kensley Construction, York, Pennsylvania, for the Rocky Ridge County Park Access Project, increasing the total amount by $140,776.72, changing the original total from $445,500 to $586,276.72.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing, oh, sorry.
More, do we, what's the reason for that change?
Basically, when the trail was designed, well, when they got into construction of the trail, they found that the soils that the trail was being constructed on weren't suitable for the trail, so they had to bring in additional fill and correct the soils basically to construct it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve change order number two between the County of York on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department and Kensley Construction, York, Pennsylvania, for the Rocky Ridge County Park Access Project, decreasing the total amount by $16,936.50, changing the total from $586,276.72 to $569,340.22.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the Emergency Management Hazmat Team and Emergency Services Marketing Corp., Inc., DeWitt, New York, to provide web-based IM responding software for mobile dispatches for the Hazmat Team, live tracking the Hazmat calls, and scheduling training for a total cost of $1,450 for the period of June 29th, 2022, to June 28th, 2027.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and YESCO Security, Effort of Pennsylvania, to upgrade fiber data lines and upgrade cameras for new office space for a total cost of $11,286 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and McClure Company, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, for replacement of 11 leaking boiler tubes for a total cost of $12,118 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information Technology Services Department and Momentum ECM LLC Mechanicsburg, PA, for document management software licensing maintenance from June 30th, 2022, to June 29th, 2023, for a total cost of $102,559.15 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve a grant award in the amount of $38,452.40 from the Pennsylvania Department of State to the County of York on behalf of the Department of Elections and Voters Registration to improve the administration of elections.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve an extension of a grant application on behalf of the York County Prison to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, PA, to extend the grant for an additional one year to utilize the remainder of the funds to support our medical assistance treatment program to supply Vivitrol for individuals struggling with opioid addiction reentering the community from prison for a period of July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2023.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the standard mileage reimbursement rate for York County employees as established by the Internal Revenue Service, Washington, DC, increasing the rate from .585 cents per mile to .625 cents per mile, effective July 1st, 2022, effective on miles driven on or after July 1st, 2022. This policy is consistent with the IRS regulations, which comes after a June 9th, 2022 IRS memo announcing a mid-year increase to the standard mileage reimbursement rate.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the Treasurer's Office and Loomis Armored U.S. LLC for armored car services for the period of June 1st, 2022, through May 31st, 2023, for a total amount of $23,358.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the submission of a grant application on behalf of the Adult Probation Department to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, Harrisburg, PA, in the amount of $20,000 to expand the crisis intervention team program by certifying 15 new CIT instructors to assist with the growth of the CIT academies. Trainers will include local law enforcement, MH professionals, mental health professionals, and correctional officers.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the weekly disbursements for June 8th, 2022, totaling $20,578,067.83.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mark is a pretty big number.
Yeah. Yes, it includes about $10.5 million, about principal and interest payments on the debt, and that occurs generally twice a year.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the weekly disbursements for June 15th, 2022, totaling $13,499,641.96.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This is another big number.
This one includes about $9 million worth of capitation payments for health choices, which is the per person charge or that's, that's paid for mental health services for the Medicaid recipients in the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On to appointments and reappointments.
Motion to approve the following reappointments to the York County Area Agency on Aging's Advisory Council. The candidates and terms are listed below in the agenda.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the appointment of Evelyn Godsy as a member of the York County Area Agency on Aging's Advisory Council for a three-year term, effective June 1st, 2022, through May 31st, 2025.
Our second, the agenda, or motion, excuse me, motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to approve the appointment of Vincent Canizaro, Spring Garden Township, to the York County Solid Waste Authority Board to fulfill the rest of the term of Charles Ritzman following his resignation, commencing June 15th, 2022, through December 31st, 2025.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There were no executive sessions. Any old business? On to other business. to other business. We did the proclamation. We are joined by our colleagues from the American Red Cross who are going to give us an update. So I'll pull up your presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Laura Burke. I'm the Executive Director of the American Red Cross in Central PA. My territory covers eight counties in Central PA. I am joined today by my colleague Alan White, who is our Disaster Program Manager, who oversees four counties in Pennsylvania, including York County. And we are delighted to be able to present an impact summary for the commissioners on our York County performance through our fiscal year 2022 to date, and then share areas where we would love to see some growth in our program services and impact in the next year, which will commence July 1, 2022. So in York County, since July 1, 2021 through current date, we have responded to 62 disaster events in York County, supporting 302 individuals who have been impacted by those disasters. Most of that is concentrated around York City. However, we have seen some other areas that were affected as a result of Ida and that coming up through the state. So specifically in Dover Township, we did see some significant damage as a result of that, which contributes to this total. To put that in some perspective, as it relates to the rest of my central Pennsylvania counties, York County is the highest response area and continues to be over all the other counties, which is certainly something that we do pay attention to as a team and look for positioning of programs and services as a result. In York County alone, we have 124 volunteers who support our mission. As a Red Cross, we are very proud of the fact that we are 90% volunteer, and 124 volunteers are responding in York County, whether it be through response services, mental health services, services for our armed forces, or a variety of our programs that we offer here locally. We're proud to say that we've educated 82 students in disaster and emergency preparedness through our free preparedness programs that we provide to school districts anywhere ages K through 12. To date, I would say to date, this is our metrics actually of April 30. We have installed 16 free smoke alarms in York County. We have collected 5,300 units of blood. I want to spotlight this statistic because this is fantastic. York County is the leader in blood collection, and in a year of significant crisis, when it related to the blood supply, York County has continued to be a leader in these services. So I cannot thank the constituents of York County enough for stepping up to the plate to donate the gift of life-saving blood. In terms of our military programs and communications, emergency communications to the military community, we have provided 281 critical community and emergency cases to military personnel to date. I would like to kind of hit the pause button and turn it over to my colleague Alan White to kind of expand upon some of the disaster program efforts here in York County and any significant responses.
Thank you. So just like Laura said, just to kind of expand just a little bit on some of the numbers that she just relayed to you all. When we, going back to the previous slide, I'm gonna try not to blow this up here. We had 62 disaster event responses. Okay, so with this, this is actually a good average here. Prior to COVID, we were really running high. The number of 302 individuals compared to the actual events, a lot of that is around multifamily fires. So it takes a little bit of skill and a lot of experience and commitment from our volunteers to go from handling a single family home to a multifamily type of unit. So they have done a great job with that. And with those 302 individuals that have been served, those are 100% numbers that we have not missed the mark on serving and meeting every appropriate needs for our clients here in York County. So the number of, like Laura said, 124 volunteers supporting the mission, okay, and especially for our disaster folks who do a very good job of making sure that they're getting out there in York City and across York County. Some of these volunteers are also meeting the challenges across the country also. So they are, they're cross-trained not only to make sure that they are meeting our needs here at home in York County, but also across the country and wherever we, they require our assistance, anywhere there are some big events. We have volunteers that are, of course, getting out into schools, teaching programs such as the Pelicase Project and Pedro, so we can do, have some of our kids do some of the work for us in doing some disaster prevention, fire prevention. So what happens is, is that we provide a little bit of education to those kids, and as excited as they are, they go home and they tell mommy and daddy, and they get them influenced. And that way, what happens is, is that they help get the message across. So now, 16 free smoke alarms installed may not seem like a lot for this year, but in previous years, we had literally blanketed York City and parts of York County with our Sondi Alarm Program. So we have hit every quadrant of, especially York City, with our program, installing at times 200, 300, 500, and even 800 smoke alarms in a day, in a four to five hour period. So we attribute some of our low response numbers and that number because of the fact that we've already, the volunteers have already been out there and made a great effort to prevent any damage and any loss of life. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Laura real quick.
Thank you, Alan. And I just want to quick spotlight the fact that when we talk about clients, or we call them clients, but individuals served as a result of a disaster, this is really a wraparound on the clients. This includes financial assistance, this includes mental health services, because many do have the most challenging day or period of their lives when we come to come to their aid. It also provides disaster health services. We have a team of volunteers that will replace durable medical equipment and kind of really do a full assessment to determine the immediate needs, and we make sure we meet them through our health services team. So we really do a comprehensive job of taking care of these individuals who have experienced the worst day of their lives. Shifting gears and talking about what we're looking forward to in our fiscal year 23, you know, Alan did demonstrate, you know, that, you know, the value of our community partnership when it comes to our Sondi Alarm Program thing is very important. We could not do the work we do without community partnerships. We're a proud partner agency of the United Way here in York County, and I find those meetings to be invaluable when it comes to talking about resources that other agencies can provide, that we could potentially partner with. So certain ways that we can demonstrate a community partnership here in York County is through blood drives and through increasing our blood donor base. I must commend President Commissioner Julie Wheeler for helping to amplify that message through your newsletter, but also through some media outlets as well. You know, that's exactly what we look for from some of our public officials and media relationships, is to help us amplify those messages. We look to partner with any veteran resource groups. I have personally spoken with Veterans Affairs for York County, any other groups that work with veterans. The Red Cross can provide a lot of free resources and programs to aid the military community in the full spectrum of their service, from enlistment through their veteran lifecycle. We talk about long-term assistance for displaced individuals. The Red Cross is an agency that we help in the immediate aftermath of a disaster, and those partnerships are invaluable that we talked about with those agencies that can, we can connect those individuals to provide that longer-term assistance, when it comes to anything from housing to any other resource they may need. We do have a team of caseworkers that'll walk them through the next few weeks after that event and help connect them with those longer-term resources. So that's a vital part of our work with the Red Cross. We talk about some of our proactive programming, and I'm really looking to engage and expand on our partnerships here in York County in fiscal 23 through some very intentional outreach. Specifically, as Alan mentioned, with our free preparedness education programs we do with youth, partnering with York City Schools would be a great place to provide some of that expanded education. And other districts, of course, in York County, specifically looking at our own risk assessment and our own data to make sure that we're being very intentional about the areas that we target, to make sure that we can have the most, maximize our impact with it. We talked about our free smoke alarm installation program. We're really going through the risk assessment process to determine where we're going to be positioning some of those resources next year. We talk about mass care exercises and support. The Red Cross is a partner of a lot of government agencies, most recently with the Peach Bottom Nuclear Plant Exercise. We do provide a simulation of shelters. So we set up multiple shelters across the county footprint to simulate what that would look like, and we are evaluated on that should there be a radiological emergency. So the Red Cross is very much a partner with some, a lot of those agencies when it comes to those types of exercises. And then I would say most importantly is developing and building our volunteers. Alan referenced that our volunteers wear a lot of hats. They do so willingly, and I'm always indebted to them. But any time that we can build relationships for a source of new volunteers, so we can take at least one of those hats off of one of our very committed and tired volunteers, we are always looking for opportunities to promote those programs. So those are a couple ways that we are really looking to expand and grow into fiscal 23, which commences on July 1. Other than that, I can open up to questions, but I really just appreciated the time to talk to you about what the Red Cross is doing, our impact this year, but really important to look forward ahead, look forward to fiscal 23 and what we can do in York County.
Great, thanks.
Could you talk just a little bit for the old timers that know that your facility had always been on Queen Street, and you moved? Maybe tell us where you're at now.
Oh, thank you. The Red Cross went through a real estate review recently, and we did have, we do still technically have a property on South George Street that is up for sale. Being very proactive, the Red Cross team, talking about community partnerships as a great example, really leveraged a lot of our partnerships in the community to help find a new home for our team. We really wanted to make sure that we were able to efficiently use the resources and the facility that we were going to be moving into. Part of that outreach was to the York County Fire Department, and we are very pleased with our new home co-located with the York County Fire Department on Mount Pisgah Road. I thank you all for attending our ribbon cutting, even though we didn't get the big scissors this time. Maybe, I don't want to move again, so we're not going to say next time. But this is an example of where our community partnership really comes into play in leveraging our resources, leveraging our mission, and making sure we're doing good for the community. So we are still very much a part of York County, York City, just a little bit outside the city limits, but our response time is still two hours upon call. We are dispatched.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Laura Allen?
I would just echo what Laura said about donating blood. It's really important as a blood donor. It's fairly painless. So for those of you watching that may be a little apprehensive, it's really not as bad as what you may think it is. So I would encourage you to give some thought and reflect on donating blood through the American Red Cross. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I had one other piece of other business before we move on to public comment. I just wanted to recognize our Controller's Office. They recently received an award from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. They have awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the County of York for its annual comprehensive financial audit for the fiscal year ending in December 31, 2020. The report was judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. I know we recognized them last year, so this is two years in a row. So congratulations, thank you. And again, I think this speaks to our one strategic anchor of fiscal responsibility. So, thank you. Okay, I'll open up any public comment. If I could have a motion to adjourn? Sorry, sorry, gosh. If you could just state your name and municipality and...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Thomas Paul. I'm a resident of the City of York, and election integrity is something I'm very passionate about. I would like a description of the past and what will be done in the future with ballot boxes here in York County or ballot box. Is it accessible anytime? And if so, is there a sheriff's deputy or deputies overseeing that a person or persons does not put in excess of one ballot in the box? And if so, what will be done about it? Because to me, I would like to think there would be a sheriff's deputy to oversee that in the event that there is a ballot box. When is it accessible to the public? And what's to prevent somebody from putting 50, or 40, or 30, or more than one ballot in the box? It would make sense to me that if you're voting, you only put your ballot in the box, and no one else would do so. I would appreciate if you could elaborate on that if you could. Thank you.
Well, this is public comment. I will make a statement that we take election security very seriously here, and we did have a curbside service, Dropbox, that was placed out in front of our building three times prior, and including Election Day, and that ballot box was staffed by a sheriff's deputy at all times, was also staffed by a county employee. We do not have multiple boxes throughout the county, and our ballot box was never unattended.
Okay, any other public comment? Hearing none. If I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Okay, I will move on to Salary Board and call the Salary Board meeting to order.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 1, 2022 Salary Board meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Open up for any public comment. Hearing none?
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collecting bargaining agreements or set forth in York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and rail offices as stated below with no additional benefits or concessions unless otherwise noted, and there was listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'm gonna call for a roll call vote for this motion. Greg Bauer, yea or nay?
Nay.
Commissioner Hoke?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler, yes, motion carries. If I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. And moving on to Retirement Board.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held on June 1, 2022 as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'll open up for public comment. We'll move on to new business.
I make a motion to include the following vested individual on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Sharon K. Warner, prison.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to include the following individual on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Louis P. Dido, prison. Christopher P. Quigley, domestic relations.
Sorry, Greg.
Paul M. Root, Sheriff's Department. Daniel R. Striebig, prison.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I don't believe there were any executive sessions.
There were no executive sessions.
Open it up again for public comment. If I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. And one last board. I'll call a depository board meeting to order.
I move to approve a custodial agreement between Wilmington Trust and York County.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I move to retain the following Wilmington Trust custodial account, with the requirement that all drafts or orders drawn against the foregoing account must be signed by the Commissioners, the the controller, and the treasurer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just for the public, Barb, what is this account for?